How about that? Well, to the September 20th meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission, I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation, commission members ask questions, if any. Members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. It's two questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak. And at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished the applicant, we'll be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. If you do, please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into the deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application. Results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues are in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discussion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest difference of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote and they're dead unless both numeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, planned unit developments. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications, with the city council making the final decisions. Please turn off all cell phones at this time. Commissioner and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. I'm Liba Latham. Jennifer Denson.
Here.
John Dallas.
Here.
Shirley Sessions. Alan Cameron.
Here.
Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Matt Anderson.
Here.
Nick Amberger.
Here.
Beth Britt.
Here.
Don Hembry.
Here.
And Cart Blackwell.
Here.
We, a quorum has been established. Ms. Beaco?
Thank you, Ms. Latham. I'd just like to take a few minutes to introduce new commission members recently appointed and sworn in by Mayor Stimson. First, we have Mr. Matt Anderson. Matt is a special projects manager for the mayor's office, so we welcome him. And also, we have Mr. Cart Blackwell with the Mobile Carnival Association. He's a curator with that organization and also a historic preservation agent. So, we're excited to have these new commissioners here to give of their time to this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beaco. I will call number one, 1610 Union Street. Is the applicant present in agreement with the recommendations? Is anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone here to speak against it? Thank you. Number two, the east side of Clear Creek Drive. It has been recommended that the applicant withdraw the app-- oh, hello.
Okay, Brett O'Reilly with Poly Surveying. I guess something happened after I left last meeting. It was set to be approved, and now it's back on the agenda. I have read through the report, and it appeared to me that potentially the questions coming are truly a right-of-way. I will tell you that we surveyed the property. It's monumented as if there's a right-of-way there. The, I have an old survey that Mr. Byrd did years ago that shows a right-of-way through there as well. He did the subdivision to the north. All indications are that there's a right-of-way. What I'm going to ask for is some time to get a title search done fully to see, you know, what's truly going on here. I know there's also, it was not in the initial report on September 6th that FIRE, I guess, has asked for a public road B bill, which I'm not sure if that came from engineering and FIRE, along with 10 six-inch water line. There's all kind of major things going on here. This is three parcels that my client purchased. We're just trying to make those legal lots to build three residential homes. You know, if we were to push in on the road, I mean, this isn't a, this property values, you know, not very high in relation. To build a road at $450 a linear foot for three homes is absolutely not going to happen. So, I guess my client may have purchased something now that is deemed unusable for any type of development without moving forward if the commission chooses us to push us in that direction. So, I'm going to need some time. This just popped up on me yesterday. Did not expect it to even be on the agenda. So, if I could have, you know, not a standard holdover, maybe more like three meetings so that I could have some time to address that, that would be more than fair.
Three meetings would be November 2nd.
I think we could do that. I'll get some time to get titles, to look at it, and maybe have an opportunity to speak with FIRE and engineering and see what options may be there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Number three, 61 Jordan Lane. The applicant present?
Jerry Byrd, Byrd Surveying Company for the applicant. Condition four and six is what we'd like to talk about. Condition four limits the lot to a single curb cut. Condition four, traffic engineer wants to limit it to the existing curb cuts. I had mentioned in a narrative to them, there's a horseshoe drive existing in the front yard. We wanted to keep those two curb cuts. Only reason we're down here is to move the building set back a little closer to the street so that they can put an addition on the front of the house, and they do not want to remove a curb cut. And like I say, it'd just be changing to existing curb cuts would be good. That's the only thing.
And six already does that. Six mentioned.
Yeah.
Cuts, plural.
Right.
Lot is limited to existing curb cuts on number six.
Do I?
Lot is limited to existing curb cuts, plural, on number six.
Well, that's what traffic engineering says.
Right, which is good. You want that.
Yeah, I want number six. Number four, I'd just like to change to two are existing curb cuts on number four.
Yeah, that's what we decided to say.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you. Are you finished?
Okay.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you. Number four, Golden Subdivision, 1341 and 1351 Cady Road North. It has been recommended for tentative approval. The applicant is here, has indicated that he is in agreement. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you. Number five is Majestastick Division, 7911 Airport Boulevard. It's been recommended for tentative approval. The applicant?
Jerry Byrd, Byrd Surveying. Want to talk curb cuts again. It's condition three this time. Recommendation is one curb cut per lot or two on lot one, shared with lot two, one of them shared with lot two. If you look at the aerial photograph, there's, in front of this property, or in front of lot one especially, it's kind of like a service road that's set over, and their curb cut comes in off of it. And you can see the driveway that comes in on the west end of kind of like a deceleration lane. We would like to maintain that curb cut area and the existing curb cut on lot two.
Which number, I'm sorry?
Three.
Number two, too.
Condition three.
I think it's number two.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, wait a minute. All right. Now, let's see. Existing curb cuts. All right, we stay with number two, but then number three talks about them also. Yeah. Number two will be fine, limited to existing curb cuts.
So, you're okay with number two?
Yeah, existing.
Item three, that doesn't talk about, I talked about the 25-foot minimum building setback line.
Yeah. Does Traffic have a comment about this?
If they are only wanting to keep the two existing curb cuts for the two individual lots, is that what I'm hearing you say? Or do you want lot two to have its own lot as well, or own curb cut as well?
We'd like part to have its own in the same, in that kind of a deceleration lane, like it exists.
Okay.
It'd have to be widened if they do it commercially, but--
So, I would disagree that it's a service road. I would say that it's the commercial property is expanded into the right-of-way because it's really just in front of this parcel. I know my comments on, hold on, number seven are very wordy, and I usually am not this wordy about curb cuts, but I wanted, really don't need any additional curb cuts closer further west than what exists right now. Because of its location at the end of the deceleration lane, people are looking over their shoulder, they're not looking in front of them to see what's going out of a driveway. So, that's my grave concern.
How about the curb cut on lot two, the western lot, limited to the east 40 feet of the lot, or 50 feet, or from the existing curb cut over, I can get that measured and we pin it down. But like I say, if you develop it commercial, which it will be, it's going to have to be widened.
What's there now, you think, has to be widened? Because it is, it's quite, can you, the aerial is really far out. I mean, I can see the footprint of the asphalt from now, and it almost looks like it's a, I mean, because really you can only go right. You can turn right into this site and right at this driveway. So, it's, that's a lot, I mean, there's asphalt basically from, it looks like there's a parked car there, all the way to that median nose, and that, to me, looks over 50 feet wide, and it looks like it already extends in front of the second lot that you're trying to create. So, if you keep the one that's there, I would prefer it to be shared with the lot two. So, you can keep the one to the east, but the one there really needs to be shared with lot two. It's hard to see on the aerial exactly where everything lies and all that, but if you want to, if you want to remain, I hate to say open-ended, but not restrict them at this time, it's always possible in the future that that arrangement of Dawes may not be that way. Sometimes that configuration isn't always the safest because people are having to look so far over their shoulder. That's probably a design that was put in more recently than not to allow that swinging lane. It's possible that that lane may one day go back up into the intersection, and the idea of another curb cut is not a problem. So, if you want to leave it open-ended to just not specify a certain number, just approved by traffic engineering, I think we can still work it out with the developer.
Okay.
If, I mean, if that satisfies the commission, unless you just want to see it. This is a--
Well, there's, the effort is, is to sell lot two. And he's maintaining ownership. That's his business on lot one. And whatever, that driveway will need to be addressed.
Within, it may be--
Well, we'll say within a year, maybe.
It may be advantageous then, since it's part of a sale, to say, approved by engineering, or by traffic engineering, but may be limited to shared access if deemed necessary. Just there's a record of it on the plat when it's sold, that that's a possibility, so the property owner can't--
Okay.
--raise an arm and hand and have a problem later. If that's, if that's okay with everyone, that's a condition I can live with.
Okay.
I believe the note two basically says that. A placement on the note with the final plat stating that each lot is limited to its existing curb cut, with any changes in their sizes, locations, designs to be approved by traffic engineering. I think they--
Yeah.
You actually okay with note number two?
Yeah. So, will we have to strike one of the later notes?
I think it's strike number three.
Strike three and leave number two?
Does that seem appropriate?
I think--
You want number three struck, you'd prefer to see that not there?
We'll get it worked in.
But you're okay with number two and knowing that the potential owner or current owner or potential owners will just have to coordinate with traffic engineering.
I think what we're looking at is number two to be amended. Placement of a note on the final plat stating that all driveway sizes, locations, or designs to be approved by traffic engineering and conform to ASG standards. This may include requiring shared driveways between lots one and two. Then you could strike three and seven.
I'll try not to be so wordy next time. I apologize.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Is there anyone--
Yeah.
Anything else to say?
Right, right, right. That's what we're getting confused on.
Yes, I've discovered that. Not in the numbers, are not in order.
Staff, can we get those, what you're just verbatim written out so we can just add it into the motion when we get to that point?
Make sure when the commission votes, we're voting on the correct thing. To simplify, and we'll make this statement when it comes time for voting, that we'll go off of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd.
All right.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you. Number six, 460 and 462 George Street. This application is recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present and in agreement with the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you.
I've got a quick question. On number two, it was mentioned to the retention of the 25-foot minimum setback along George Street. Are there non-existing structures that are within that setback?
It would apply to any new construction.
Why would we do that with any new construction?
It's a requirement of both the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance in this area.
I mean, every house on that street is--
Okay.
--right up on the street.
The commission can waive that. Byrd just thought up, this is in a historic district, and a historic district overlay, you can have a setback that goes in line with the adjacent structures. So, the commission could waive section VD nine of the regs regarding that front setback.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yeah. My client did bring that up to me. I thought it was, I've never seen it waived before, but if it's something that can be done, absolutely. I would have come here and posed that question, but in my experience, I haven't seen that brought, but if we can, in lieu of the 25-foot setback, you know, based on existing structures or whatever it may be, we would ask the commission to consider that.
Just to clarify, the reason why it would be recommended is because the underlying zoning ordinance would allow that lesser setback.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak to it? Number seven, 110 Burgard Street, the GMNO subdivision.
Ms. Latham?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may bring up, there are actually four existing curb cuts along lot, proposed lot one to Telegraph Road, what's identified as St. Joseph's Street, and the staff is agreeable with those remaining, so that would revise condition number six on the agenda.
So, it would revive it to existing curb cuts?
Yes, please.
Do we know the purpose of lot two?
Is the applicant present?
Well, I posed this question to the applicant, and I was informed that lot two was purchased when it was a parcel in that configuration, and they were just maintaining the same configuration when they were going into the parcel, or the lot process, in case at some future point they wanted to sell it. So, this property is owned by the city, and they're going through the subdivision process so that the third lot can be potentially sold, and the city will retain ownership of lots one and two.
The city owns the whole parcel now, but not, it's, and it was at one time divided when the city purchased?
I was informed that the lot two portion was purchased in that shape, so that they are trying to maintain the original parcel shape when it was acquired by the city.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against this? Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against this application? Thank you. We will move on to number eight, 3703 Ocho Road. Recommendation, this rezoning has been recommended for denial. Yes, sir.
Todd Dempsey, I'm with Burton Property Group. We're the parent company of VRPC Holdings. Before I give you kind of backstory to this project, we have already indicated to staff that we would go with a more restrictive zoning, LV two on this instead of B two, which should eliminate some of the more obnoxious uses, I guess, that are allowed under B two to give more comfort to staff on what we're trying to do with the property. So, we're, we would like to change that now if we can, to go to a B two, from B two to LB two. And just to give council a little backstory on this property, so you can kind of understand what we're dealing with, there's some pictures up behind you that show you the current condition of this property. This property is a shielded property. It's on the, the Historic Development Commission has an easement actually on it, and the owner of this property is infirmed right now, and they have a power of attorney that is handling everything for them, and a person that has power of attorney that's handling it for them. And there were no taxes paid on it, and the city filed a list pending on it, and the city actually tacked and owned it. And so, the current situation that it finds itself in is going to be the situation that remains unless somebody steps in and does something with it. It's kind of caught in no man's land because of this situation with the owner, but also it's on the city's blight list to be condemned, but you can't condemn it because it's got a shield on it. And so, we're a commercial development company that does shopping centers mainly and restaurants, and a bunch of us live by this. And the opportunity came up to do something with this, which is a little bit of our wheelhouse and actually get involved in something fun instead of building grocery stores and restaurants, which people tell us what they have to look like and what you have to do with them. And so, we approached the representative, the owner, to get involved with this and see if we could fix it, basically. And just for some more information to you guys, there, the Mobile Historic Development Commission actually has a protective easement on this property, like all shielded houses, so have a level of influence over this property, even if it's rezoned. And the easement is so specific and restrictive that they can't change landscape, or cut a tree down, or move a bush without their approval. So, even if we were to get rezoning on this, it's not like we can just go do whatever's in the zoning code. There's still a layer of protection on that property because it is historic. And the reason for the rezoning, obviously, is we get to show one of these, why one of these reasons is applicable. Well, right now, it's R1, and the condition of the structure, but also the location up on the right-of-way is not conducive to residential usage. No one's going to live there, and no one tried to live there for a really long time because of that. And in addition, the money that it would take to bring that house back into order because of the specifics regarding the easement and the shield on it, you have to repair it in such a manner that you can only use certain materials, so on and so forth. And so, it's, it's going to take a unique situation for somebody to step in and remedy this, and we feel like we're the people to do it. But in order to do that, we need to rezone it to LB two, and there is not any available B zoning along that stretch. Now, B three, I believe, is right across the intersection, but going down, there is not any other available parcels for this type of use. So, that's one of the reasons. And then, as everybody's probably familiar with the Village of Spring Hill, that area's changing, and we think that this should be in addition to that continued redevelopment in Spring Hill. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you all have about it.
I have a question. Please. Thank you. The LB two does allow alcohol beverage license if it's like a restaurant, you know, sit-down type stuff. So, do you anticipate, is that the reasons you need the LB two? Because we have a letter in support by a nearby neighbor, but they're recommending, and they put it into brackets, a light commercial and then office application, which would be the B one. Is it, an office is not what you're thinking about, a more nine-to-five, or are you thinking something that will have a profile requiring the LB two?
Our preference is off, that's what we see it as, but, I mean, we're developers. We have to be honest. We're not going to, we don't want to limit ourselves to any potential use with a structure of this character and in this condition. And so, that's why for LB two, I mean, if it's a, kind of like a carpe diem type place or something like that, that would end up selling, you know, alcoholic drinks in the evening or something like that, but--
You would contemplate that as a potential?
Yes, at this point, we would. I mean, we're not looking to put a bar in there or a late-night establishment by any means. And again, anything we do, the Mobile Historic Development Commission's going to have to sign off and approve that, too.
I'm sorry, I lost what you said.
I said, we are not anticipating that to be a bar. That's not what we want. I live up the street from this. I'm not aiming for that, but again, the Mobile Historic Development Commission has approval over anything we do with this property.
Even the use of it?
Not the use-- Not the use, but any improvements. And so we can't go in and, you know, put bars in and things like that if they don't approve it.
Well, that would be interior, they, they're more concerned about the historic integrity.
They have control over everything according to that easement.
The use of your building, even though you zone it in a certain classification?
Indirectly, by the way that they approve any improvement to it. Goes for footprint of the building, any interior improvements, its landscaping.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, it's.
I'm not doubting, I just want clarification.
No, that's, yeah, and when I read the title commitment and the exceptions, and I saw that, that I was surprised, to say the least, that it was that repressive.
Does the footprint have adequate parking on site?
The site plan that we presented has more parking than is required by code, and it's up there behind you now.
Do you, do you anticipate using those other, there's some additional things on this, on this footprint?
Not for any type of abitable structure, no. There, it's kind of an old-looking, beaten-down chapel thing, and then the other one is just a square.
So you don't plan to make that into any kind of detail or?
No, I mean, maybe a storage room for, you know, something, but probably not. Our focus, our focus is really on the main structure, and if you can see on that drawing, on the right and left sides of the building, our proposal is to add about, I believe it's 200 square feet, I can't read it because it's too far away and my eyes are bad, but I believe it's 200 square feet on each side. Isn't that? Yeah.
Oh, so when you say addition, that's what you're, but you're going to edge that and not use these other buildings, so this doesn't require a PUD, correct? This is not a PUD?
That's correct, and a lot of discussions with them, they're not trying to use those other two buildings, they're just historic on the site and you can't do anything.
I'm just going by what I'm looking at?
Yeah, no, that's fine. And that, that drawing may be a little misleading. Behind the building, it looks like there's another structure coming off and then one coming long ways, that's just a brick patio area. If you go back to the pictures, you can see where the, where the, the back wall is actually like collapsing down, and I think you can see the brick area in between the main building and that first little secondary structure.
What's the total square footage when you make your addition to your picture?
I think it's like 1,600 square feet or something like that. I mean, it's small.
And the additions are for restrooms, correct?
Yeah, the addition would be probably for restrooms or something like that, you know. I mean, that's what we have planned right now, is we kind of envision a lawyer's office or something like that for this, and, you know, we spend all day getting told what we can do with buildings by retailers, so this one is a little bit different, something fun to work on for them for.
When you do the additions, does that have to go through the historic?
They approve that, yes. They approve the materials, the design, everything. So they basically have control over everything that we can do on this property.
Have you spoken to the nearby neighbors?
My surveyor's one of them. He's here today, but other than that, no.
Not to your knowledge.
I think they got the public notification that was mailed out by, by our surveyor, but other than that, no.
Okay, thank you.
One of your limiting factors is going to be your parking, because you are real, real tight on parking, and you have your requirement, but it's going to be, it's going to be tight. I've been in this property before, it's a very charming structure, and it's, I'm sure, and it's a shame to see it in the condition that it's in, but, so I think anything would be an improvement over what it is now.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application?
Oh, and one more thing let me add before I leave, we have a Historic Development consultant, Stephen McNair, we've engaged to help us on this, so to make sure we, you know, stay between the lines and do everything we're supposed to, so that's another level of comfort everybody should have, that, you know, McDonald's isn't going here, obviously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Any further questions? Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Marilyn Foley, and a neighbor at 3702, which is just across Ochel, and we've lived here for about 18 years and watched the property decline, and had hoped for something to be done without rezoning, but at this point, we really feel, feel like it's the most practical application for this, and thank you for clarifying some of those things. But we, we think it's a derelict property that's a fire hazard, dangerous for people that are using the sidewalk, and a habitat for vermin, and are quite frustrated with it, and concerned about it, and it affects the property values in, in the neighborhood as well as Spring Hill, so I hope, I hope we can see something good come of it, because it is a charming property. Thank you.
Ma'am, just so I'm clear, were you also comfortable for retail, if it was a coffee shop, or a little restaurant, or something like that?
I, so, I didn't know that, about that rezoning, but I do feel confident that he's a neighbor too, and that he has concerns over that, and that, again, that would be an improvement over what's there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against this application?
My name is Scott Bowman, I live at 213 Whacker Lane South, I'm actually the property that is directly behind this, this site. And my major concern on, don't get me wrong, I agree with what's been said, the property is in very bad shape and anything, any improvement would be a help, but at the same time, I got, I have some concerns, the parking, or at least the congestion on Whacker Lane South right now, with the apartment complex or condominium complex across the street, the parking on Whacker Lane at probably 90%, I've lived at 213 Whacker Lane for nine years, and the, the parking situation there with the apartment complex, when they park on the street, which they do every single day, it turns Whacker Lane South into a one-way, going towards Ochel Road. And I'm just concerned with, with an additional, if it goes to retail, or, you know, if it, professional office probably wouldn't be as bad, but if it has the opportunity to go to a retail, or a coffee shop, or anything like that, I think the parking could, could become, could become an issue. Another thing that I'm concerned about is the, obviously living right behind it is the bus zone, that I would be allowed with my house, with their parking along this site plan. I had, first time I'd seen that, shows their, their park basically right up to the property line. There, I would have some concern about a buffer between, would they be able to back up, back some of that parking up to not where it would, where it might be directly on the property line? And then also, the, with the parking lot, if there's a business there that would have nighttime activity, there would also obviously be lights, I'd be concerned about the lighting of the parking lot, being right directly behind that also. And lastly, the, and this is just from my experience with the apartment complex across the street, they have, they have a dumpster which is picked up at all hours of the night. This place, if it becomes a commercial building, I'm assured that I'd have dumpster service of some sort, and they can hardly service the one that's there now on Whacker without, matter of fact, they come at 2:00 in the morning now, because there's hardly any congestion on Whacker at that point, at that time, but that would be a concern also. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If we could have traffic engineering expand on those thoughts at all? The width of Whacker Lane with regard to any cars that are parked there, and, you know, the possible turning issues that people would have coming in and out of that proposed parking area?
The, the, I understand with the apartments, is not that there isn't enough room for them to park on their site, it's just that they don't. We can sign no parking in that area, especially adjacent to the apartment complex, with very little trouble. If, I don't think the neighbors are going to want it down the street going back towards Zimlich, it's probably going to really just need to be limited to this area that's going to possibly be commercial on both sides, but that's definitely something we can do and have looked at in the past with previous thoughts of development on this property.
Let's, let's prepare a memorandum, if possible, so we can look at that administratively to determine if that's the best path forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
A question for staff, if this zoning change is approved, would the applicant be required to come back later to apply for a PUD?
Only if those additional buildings are habitable, if they remain as is or are used for storage, digital file storage, archival storage, things of that nature, then no, because they would be considered accessory.
So they're able to accommodate their parking requirements and buffering requirements and lighting requirements and all that on?
Correct. Full compliance with all municipal codes and ordinances, a subdivision to create a legal lot of record, possibly a sidewalk waiver if one is not proposed along Whacker, and then, like we said, the PUD if there will be more than one habitable structure on the site.
I have a question, or similar dialogue. This is kind of similar, to some degree, to the resters, I think that came in as a variance to become more of a commercial footprint in the area, in a very residential section of Spring Hill, and so I was wondering if the applicant would work with the neighbors and talk about incorporating certain things into this application that kind of gave the comfort zone, because the LB two, just by right of that, that pretty, might surprise some of the neighbors the next morning, what could happen, but if there was some kind of, you know, I guess, neighborly consideration, that become part of the application? For hours of operation and lighting in the parking lot? I know we have a code that says you can't blare it, you know, to the residential, but I'm just wondering if that's kind of something?
Can I come by down here and answer some of that?
Hold on just one second.
Let me jump in for a second, the B two that was proposed is a heavier or more intensive use than an LB two, and there's one neighbor here today.
Two.
One and opposing, opposing.
Well, we have help with the other opposition.
I guess my point is, there was an outcry and an outpour of people for resters, I do think the feeling in this area is to let's move forward and renovate this building that's dying every day, that it rains inside of it, and I just think delaying it would be undue burden.
Yeah, if I can answer a few of the questions, she was absolutely correct on the being compliant with the codes, but on top of that, I mean, we will have a, on the rear property line, a opaque fence that you can see through, which will be another, obviously.
What size were you, were you deploying?
I think code is either eight feet, six feet, something like that? Six feet, and so that, but also some landscaping back there, and then obviously we'll have to submit a photometric plan, which will, you know, you can't just shine lights in somebody's house, so that should alleviate the concern on that.
Todd, while you're on that point, let me, so the 10-foot residential buffers, your parking, and do we know if that parking's actually in that buffer, or this plan maybe accurate that picks that? Because this shows a 10-foot residential buffer on the south side, but it also shows parking in, in the buffer area.
Yeah, it's my under.
Parking's allowed in a buffer.
Okay, but then he also said he had a buffer, so do you know what your buffer on that south side by chance?
I don't remember exactly what it is, but I know we're planning to put a fence up there, it's just another level of protection between the two, two properties, but one, one thing I also just wanted to bring up in regards to the parking, to make it clear to everybody, is that we can't touch those buildings, obviously, and so we can't really design this any other way, we went in about hours and hours with our, with our engineer, site planner, figure this out, because of that back-left building right there, and that's just something to take in consideration that, of why the footprint's laid out as it is for parking. And then, one other thing I just want to bring up is, we were able to get enough time from the seller, who is, again, infirmed through their representative, to basically get through this hearing, and to try and rezone this, because trying to get anything done with them is a monumental task, and I don't want to put that out there as a negative thing, I just want to make everybody aware of that, that that is an issue related to this element. And it's a concern of ours as the developers going in, that anything, I guess like Taylor was mentioning, a burden of these other things, may put this in jeopardy, and on a lot of projects, that's not the case, on this one, it is, and I just want to speak that out so people are aware of that, because it has taken moving a mountain to even get to this point, to get us in a position to do that, and y'all may not care about that, but I wanted to put that out there for the record on what we're dealing, and I think the neighbors around that have seen that over the course of time, that nothing has been done on this, and that's one of the reasons why.
Could we get staff to read off a list of uses under, that could be classified as a LB two, just for the record?
A lot of these.
Put her on the spot.
Okay, some uses that would be allowed would include an antique store, an apothecary, sales and service, appliance repair, art gallery, art supply store, go back to the restaurant area here, a regular restaurant that could include carryout service, a restaurant that has a drive-through, let's see, a desktop publishing, radio and television repair, ice cream shop, interior decorator, furniture sales, so.
So it goes, there's a whole, a whole lot of options could be put there under LB two?
Yes.
Could we put, putting in the zoning stipulation that will limit, that the applicant would self-limit to a certain type of, of business?
The applicant could limit via voluntary condition and use restriction.
Would you be willing to settle for B one, since your focus is office, and if in fact you had a suitable?
Is B one, does B one allow a restaurant with carryout?
No, but my, my point is, if, if you had something neighbors would agree with you on in the LB two area, you could apply for a variance, isn't that right?
Rezoning change.
Or rezoning.
Considering the property, I think it would be better just for the applicant to self-limit the uses we keep and plan on putting there, just in a list of two or four.
Yeah, if there's any specific uses of LB two that are concerned, we're happy to listen to those, but again, with, with the, I mean, we're taking the risk to go out and do this on a nightmare of a project that's got so many levels of approvals outside of even our control, to handcuff ourselves even, even, is, is a hard pill to swallow when we're already fighting with basically both hands behind our back to do this, given the nature of the structure, its condition, and then all of the approvals that we're going to have to get to do anything on this anyway, so.
I didn't hear the, I mean, I honestly didn't hear the question down there, I don't know if y'all can hear me, but, I mean, I know we did have, you know, Mr. Bowman speaking, had some concerns, so I mean, I don't want to discount his, his opposition or that, but I honestly think LB two would be a great use for this property. I mean, you know, I know it makes, you know, if it was a little restaurant, or pastry shop, or coffee shop, I think that'd be great for the area, so I don't know why we want to limit him to B one at this point, when it, when he has no idea what his ultimate use may be. I mean, a 1,500 square foot restaurant or retailer is not going to be that big a burden in that area, and it's not going to generate that much traffic. The key is little, it's a small building.
And I just, I don't think, given the undertaking that we have, we have this, that we can limit ourselves to a B one, just because, I mean, the amount of money just outlay, just to even get the thing fixed, on consultants is, 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 is a lot.
I drive by, I drive by this side every day, I would never consider doing what you do, and I'm in a similar business, so I don't, I don't know why you're doing it, but I commend you for doing it.
Glad it's for punishment.
I think it's great.
But yeah, I mean, myself and some of the other principals of the company live near this, we see it, it's an eyesore, and it's something for us to work on that's a little bit outside of our normal scope. Like I said, we do shopping centers and restaurants all day, this is something else, it's a undertaking that A will bring something back with the community, be proud of, and it looks good versus a, I mean, it looks like a drug den, and it, it is a fire hazard, I mean, it's disgusting, I walk. I walked around there and it looks like the set of a horror movie. I'm not, not to exaggerate, but it does. And so I would really not like to limit ourselves just due to the hurdles that are in front of us on this.
And I appreciate that. It's very admirable what you're going to do to do. And especially in that area where the walkability has been improved upon. So your clientele, whatever the success that had happened there, you know, maybe some people coming in off the freeway is always how I say it. But for the most part, because of the size, your profile allows to be nurturing the community and its success. If you look at that list, can you say voluntarily that it would never, it's not going to be a drive-through? So like, do you see where I'm coming from?
I do, and I think the best way to approach that and look at it is again to go back to that protective easement on the property. And just to look at, I mean, you can't move those structures and you can't bulldoze them and you only repair them based on what this easement says, okay? And so to do that and to try and expand into some footprint that would house one of those uses is just not, it's not going to work. You can't do it.
I'll ask the staff, when we talk about rezoning this, can we talk about those things that we automatically are built into restricting the use of that property by virtue of its designation? I'm just trying to ensure that we don't rezone, I mean, because that's the only thing in front of us. And the staff doesn't recommend the LB2.
No, the staff didn't recommend-
B2 or LB, they didn't recommend that?
They recommend LB2.
They did recommend?
After we reviewed the chart of permitted uses, after we reviewed the chart of permitted uses, we discerned that the LB2 was a better zoning classification, given the historic nature of this property and understanding its dynamic as a neighborhood supportive venue. And so the list of uses that we identified, we felt LB2 was most appropriate. And that recommendation also came from the Historic Development Commission.
And that was their agreement as well, LB2?
Correct.
And just so you understand, they again have leaked discretion over approval of pretty much everything on this. The Mobile Historic Development Commission does, absolutely. I mean, again, it's so restrictive as into changing landscape.
Madam Chair. The list, if I could ask the staff, the list of uses that you read earlier was exhaustive for that classification? Okay, but generally speaking, the use, the most obnoxious use that I heard was a drive-through, which wouldn't fit on this anyway. And because of the architectural limitations would never, I mean, that would never work considering the configuration of the lot and you can't get rid of the buildings, so that's almost irrelevant. Exactly, geometry, okay. With that being said, are there any uses that are of that magnitude of offensiveness to the neighbors? I know that's an opinion and not a fact. Common, you know, just a common sense question because I am unfamiliar with all the uses.
You can take the staff 15 minutes to go through the chart of uses and sit here and identify those.
But typically speaking, LB2 is more restrictive than B2 for this particular purpose, that's my point.
A convenience store could be in LB2 without gas.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's just a lot of uses we'd have to go through. The limiting factor, the protection is the historical society and also limited parking that they have available there. So nothing real large can go there anyway.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Correct.
So further limitations would probably make it difficult to develop the site, which has already seen a pretty long history of failure to get developed.
The size and the location of everything and the limitations by the historical society. Nobody can make any promises, of course, or predict the future. But other than an office or a carpe diem type, I mean, 1,500 square feet?
About, yeah.
An obnoxious use is going to be pretty, pretty, not a big chance.
And with that in mind, with the administrative dedication to look at the parking situation on the street that was offensive to the adjacent property owner, coming from traffic engineering, I think that that makes easier without limiting the developer any further.
And just so you're aware, to repeat earlier, the parking shown on there is more than the code allows to make, that was one of the things we thought about, is you don't want a bunch of people parking on the street, obviously. And if you've been to the property, the topography is about, I don't have the survey with me, but probably anywhere from four to five to six feet above the road with a, some type of wall going along it. So you actually have to go up three or four or five steps to even get level onto the property from there. And that was another reason why we added some additional parking to the site. Because obviously a lawyer's office would, you know, not that much.
Does the staff have recommendations prepared for us to consider if we were to accept an LB2 proposal?
Simply full compliance with our municipal codes and ordinances. However, it included advisory that a subdivision application would be required to develop the property. Additionally, if construction of a sidewalk along Whacker was not posed, a sidewalk waiver would be required. Moreover, if those accessory buildings that have been discussed became habitable structures, a planned unit development would be necessary. So those would be the recommendations. Just to clarify, because it's been discussed so much, the existing building is 1,535 square feet. The two additions are E200 square feet, which would make the total square footage, occupiable square footage as proposed, just under 2,000 square feet.
Actually, the staff report said it was 1,535, which includes the existing building and the two additions of 200 square foot. Is that, that's how I interpreted it?
No.
So I think, I think, I thought it was 1,530, not that it really matters, but-
Yeah, even if that's the maximum, the parking that they are able to provide would exceed minimum standards for office retail at 1 to 300, as well as restaurant at 1 to 100.
And six parking spaces would be required, but 24 are proposed.
Based on 1 to 300, yes. The six is what would be required.
And again, Ms. Rich, the reason we have more than just the six was the concern of people parking on the street. Just to make sure that we were kind of self-contained and not contributing to any issues with any neighbors on the parking front.
That's going to be the most likely issue down around the route is once you get it developed is parking. People parking outside on the street for whatever type of business you have. We see that all the time with carpe diem, major parking issues there. So that would be the only concern here. But you've got a lot more parking here than was required, so hopefully that'll be sufficient.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Any further questions or comments from the commission?
Thank y'all.
I'm going to call number nine, which is the northeast corner of Paper Mill Road and Africa Town Boulevard. This application has been recommended for approval. Is the applicant present? He's indicated that he is in agreement. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner, my name is Orlando Poe. I live at 660 Shelby Street, Mobile, Alabama, Magazine Park Community. I am in opposition of this zoning as it is right now. We haven't been notified, the community hasn't been notified. They didn't put no posters up nowhere around our community. There's a sign under the bar on Bay Bridge Road. There's no signs on Africa Town Boulevard, Paper Mill Road, there's no signs there. And we don't know what's going on. The community is not aware of what's going on. You understand? We don't know what type of noise hazards it's going to be by this. We don't know what type of dust hazards, what type of environmental issues that's going to affect our community in that general area. So I'm opposed to it.
Any questions?
Staff, could you order a notification process, please?
Notifications required to all property owners that fall within 300 feet of the perimeter, outside perimeter of the property to be rezoned. And that would be first-class mail, it is not certified.
Well, there are no residents within 300 feet. So what about signage on Africa Town Boulevard or Paper Mill Road? Where would the signages have been posted?
I don't know exactly where the sign was placed, but typically when staff goes out to place the signs, they put it by the entrance to the facility, which in this case may have been underneath the bridge proper. And in regards to notification, appears the only potential residential address on our list is the Kerry Adams, Louis Dicey, and Eugene Collins at 626 Shelby Street. And that might be only because this would be the first residence here past what used to be the Credit Union. So this would be within 300 feet. That's going to be about the closest single residence to the property.
So property owners next to the front part that's being rezoned towards-
What the purpose is to rezone the entire facility into one zoning district, which is part of a project that's going on over here on the main portion of the Kimberly-Clark site. They're going to be building a new manufacturing facility that will handle or process paper and then a power generation plant on their site.
Ms. Poe, where is your home located?
I'm 660, I'm right next to the Collins family. In fact, that's my cousin. On that street been notified. We didn't receive anything in the mail. No one spoke to us. The people that want to rezone the property up there haven't spoken to no one in the community. We don't know what's going on.
Ms. Pat has just pointed it out that the 300-foot line would have ended here on Credit Union property and would not have actually extended past that point. So officially, there was no requirement to notify anyone past the Credit Union location.
Is the applicant present to answer something? Thank you, Mr. Pat.
Thank you.
Just a minute, perhaps. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Good afternoon. My name is Ramsey Sprague. I live at 63 South Fulton Street, 36606. I'm half of the Mobile Environmental Justice Action Coalition. And we reviewed this application, reviewed the decision to subdivide from June 21st, contingent on today's rezoning. We have longstanding concerns with any diminishment of residentially zoned properties in the community. We feel like that is out of alignment with the Africa Town neighborhood plan that was approved by the city council in 2016. The plan went through dozens of residents' hands to establish their firm commitment to seeing no further industrial zoning encroachment in the community. The Africa Town, this site falls well within the Africa Town planning area as defined by the city council. The lack of notification, the lack of engagement is concerning. And we've experienced this time and time again with Kimberly-Clark. We've reached out in good faith on multiple occasions to have their good faith participation in some of our community events, including immediately adjacent to their property back on June with the celebration of the launch of the Africa Town Connections Blue Way Project with the National Park Service. We received no response. Lack of community engagement speaks volumes. And I think Mr. Poe's concerns are duly stated and should be noted. And we feel strongly that this is not in congruence with the overall plan for the community. And we'd like to see this be denied. We understand that there is no legal obligation for Kimberly-Clark to consult with the community, but that it's not appropriate that they continue to not do so when there is so much investment in the future of the community from residents and residential stakeholders alike. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Would the, would the ally to come down and address the commission?
Bruce Smith, Coles, Murphy Glover. This is part of a rezoning that the city requested Kimberly-Clark to do. I believe it was residential in business and it was asked to be rezoned as in industrial. Everything over there in that area on that side is heavy industrial. It just kind of, just to match everything that's already zoned for Kimberly-Clark, to match up with all their existing property over there and just kind of bring everything else up to the current standing of every piece of property they have over there. I think the only reason why this is up here is because of, like they said, the ongoing project that they have inside their plant. Not any additional uses or changes.
So is there anything planned to be developed on this? I know you're cleaning up zoning, it's one, one, zone three different things, I2, B2, and R1. Is anything proposed to be developed on this site?
No, no, sir.
Do you know from just driving around the site where that zoning notice sign would have been posted?
I would assume that it would have been placed at the entrance.
I thought they were triggered to do the rezoning because of building a new structure. Is that not accurate?
It was a PUD and a sub. I believe the other development, there you go, was there.
It's going to be south of the Bay Bridge Road.
Some the other side of the railroad track.
It's on number 12.
That's number 12, I think, on a-
Well, that is a separate application completely. The next item on the agenda for Kimberly-Clark occurs south of the bridge. It's for a new training building. But the previous PUD and sub which triggered this rezoning that you're considering today is for northern portion above the bridge due to two new structures that are being built adjacent to the area that's being rezoned to the east.
Which is further away from existing residential that we were discussing?
Yes. So the new construction is occurring over here to the east of the site being rezoned. And as part of the PUD that was previously approved by the planning commission, there was a requirement that this piece before you today be made one zoning district rather than three zoning districts.
Oh, item number nine.
Yes.
So right now, there's nothing being proposed to be built on this?
No new construction on this, this sub proposed at this time and nothing has been presented for that.
So if anything's developed on this site?
If anything's ever developed, if we approve the zoning, whether it's, if it's ever developed, they'll have to come back in for a PUD on this piece because then it'll be tied to the prior PUD. We clean up zoning today, that's not giving them the ability to develop it a sudden. Thank you.
I would like to ask if y'all had, have had the opportunity to discuss with any of the surrounding neighborhoods, what y'all are doing, what your plans are, thing like that.
No, ma'am.
Have you attempted to reach out to the neighbors in any way, shape, or form? Mr. Coles?
Gary Coles, 457 St. Michael Street. I have spoken several times about this and Kimberly-Clark has a representative on the Africa Town Business Community Development Board. And they have discussed what's being done as far as the new power plant and the new facility, the packaging facility that's going to be developed over on the east side of the railroad tracks. And this was a part of the cleanup that was, I guess, that y'all told us to do from- And this was a part of the cleanup that was, I guess, that y'all told us to do from the PUD when they came to ask to build the power, the power plant and the packaging facility. So that, the people who come to the Africatown Business Development Community Meetings are aware of what Kimberly-Clark is doing. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further questions by commissioners? Okay. Thank y'all. We will move to number 10, which is 5188 and 5208, Mobile South Street, Royal Lagoon Seafood Subdivision. Is the applicant present and in agreement with the staff recommendations? He has indicated so. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you. We will move on to number 11. The east side of Cock and Cowsway, the East Terminal of Dunlap Drive. It's also an AT&amp;T subdivision. The application is recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? The applicant in, in agreement with staff recommendations? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against this application? Thank you very much. Number 12, the southwest corner of Bay Bridge Road and Herbert Street. This application has been recommended for tentative approval. The applicant present?
Bruce Smith, Coles, Murphy Glover, 457 St. Michael Street. We just had, one thing that we wanted to address was the tree requirements. We, the entire frontage of the property is underneath the Bay Bridge, and there's overhead power lines out there, so we would like some relief from that. If we could bank the trees, we're willing to do that, just so that we don't, we don't have to go plant the trees underneath the, the bridge and the power line.
Which item number is that on the...
Number three, and it specifically allows that. Coordination with planning and zoning staff to make sure that only the trees which are able to thrive are planted with the remainder to be banked. And if that's none, they may all be banked.
So that's all been, already been addressed?
All right. And also, the, on the, for the, for the subdivision, we just want to be known that the Alabama Power Company easement that is just to the south of the building has, has been vacated. So we would like that to be reflected on the final plat. And we can, we can provide any kind of documentation that's necessary to include that.
Where is it on the application?
Number four, I believe, is what you're referring to. And if that easement's been vacated, it, at the time the plat's recorded with submission of documentation, just to show why it's removed, that, that's fine. To any easements may be put, so if the easement's not there, that condition simply wouldn't, wouldn't apply.
So no need to change anything?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application?
Again, my name is Ramsey Sprague, 63 South Fulton Street, representing the Mobile Environmental Justice Action Coalition. Largely in principle, we don't have major opposition to this, but we do feel that it's inappropriate that Kimberly-Clark has not engaged the full breadth and spectrum of the community. The Africatown community and business form does not represent the Mobile County Training School Association, Clean, Healthy, Educated, Safe, and Sustainable Africatown, the Center for Fair Housing, Mobile Environmental Justice Action Coalition, Yorktown Missionary Baptist Church, and many of our other coalition partners. We've in fact been deliberately excluded from that group's considerations, and the overtures from industry to that group seem very focused on pushing through a very specific agenda. We wish that we would be consulted with in good, in good, because we approach these issues with good faith and don't feel that this is reciprocated on behalf of industry that neighbor us, and our resident, and resident advocates from Africatown. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this? Thank you very much. We will now move into the deliberation session. Number one, 1610 Union Street. Been recommended that the one-year contention be granted. Be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, Mr. Arrel, excuse me, east side of Clear Creek Drive. The applicant has requested a holdover until November 2nd. I will make that motion.
Second.
Just to clarify, that meeting's on, I believe, on November 1st. You may still have your old schedule in your book.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry.
November 1st, not November 2nd.
Okay, okay. Who was, who was the motion?
On the 1st.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, 61 Jordan Lane.
Moved for approval subject to staff recommendations. We're looking at condition four to existing curb cuts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four, 1341 and 1351 Cody Road North.
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number five, 7911 Airport Boulevard.
Ms. Pappas, it is the one that you have the wording for us on?
Basically, whoa, this will be based on the conditions placed on the agenda, and I had something brilliant that has now escaped me. Basically, a placement of the note on the final plat stating that the driveway location and design are to be approved by traffic engineering and conform to ASHTO standards. This may require a shared curb cut between lots one and two. That'll be condition number two. Then that would delete conditions three and seven.
Moved to approve with those conditions listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number six, 460ST and 62 George Street.
Margaret, do we need to do anything besides waive number two on this application and setback?
Technically, you would be waiving section VD9 and VDD2 of the subdivision regulations and deleting condition number two.
Okay, I'll move to approve, removing VD2 and VD9 of the subdivision regulations and striking number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number seven, 1104 Guard Street.
Moved to approve subject to staff recommendations, striking number six.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Okay, hold on. Are we striking number six or altering number six for it to read for curb cuts for lot one?
We can modify it to accept that, accept that condition.
All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, 3703 Old Chel Road.
I'll move to approve as LB22.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Can I just get clarification real quick? Just for my knowledge and for the record, when you say meeting all codes, that would imply that they have to meet the historic development requirements?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. What it can be is full compliance with all municipal codes and ordinances, and then just a advisory we can include in the letter regarding the subdivision sidewalk waiver PUD and approval of historic development as it pertains to their easements associated with the park.
And that would be the recommendation from staff?
The condition, and then just kind of, like I said, the heads up. If this proceeds, you still have these items potentially to, to address.
I think that's important, if it could be considered...
Yeah, I'll accept that language.
Following their application. Thank you.
I'll accept that language, my motion.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, the northeast corner of Paper Mill Road and Africatown Boulevard.
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just, just so we, maybe those signs, because this still has to have a city council, so the residences can still speak, but maybe we make sure that sign is posted on that, whatever the...
Signs I don't believe are posted prior to the council meeting.
Okay, just for this one?
Sometimes they stay around. It depends on the issue. So if the sign is going to stay there, if it could be moved. I know it's not a requirement for council, but I do think since obviously this body heard from residents, it's only going to go a little louder.
Then it'll be advertised for what, four weeks?
They will call for the public hearing after the legal advertised fee is received, and then the actual date will be four weeks later.
Thank you.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 10, 5188, 5208, Mobile South Street, Royal Lagoon Seafood Subdivision.
We want to take the putt and the subdivision separately?
If you take them separately again, or we can...
Let's do them separately. On the putt, I move to approve based on staff recommendations and the finding of facts A through F.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The putt application is approved, the motion for the putt application is approved.
On the subdivision, moved to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion passes. Number 11, the east side of the Cock and Cowsway, the East Terminal of Dunlap Drive.
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that was the putt and the subdivision?
I'm sorry, that one. Yep. Moved to approve the putt, approving the findings of fact A through F.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes to approve the putt. Number 12, southwest corner of Bay Bridge and Herbert Street, Kimberly-Clark subdivision, which we have a subdivision and a PUD. Y'all like to take those separately?
Moved to approve the putt based on staff recommendations and the finding of facts A through F.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Subdivision for Kimberly-Clark subdivision phase two.
Moved to approve based on staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And that was the last item on the agenda. Is there any further business? Ms. Pappas, do you have any other business? Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.